Are we unmuted Sheila?
Yes.
I can hear you.
All right, perfect. Okay, the time is now 7:01 PM on Monday, June the 10th, and I will call this Board of Trustees meeting to order. May we have roll call please?
Mayor Eichel, Protem Hanrahan.
Here.
Trustee Brettinall.
Here.
Trustee Klassen.
Here.
Trustee Poston.
Here.
Trustee Seifert.
Okay, may we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make public comment on any items not on the agenda this evening, please activate the raise hand function in the meeting program. Sheila, did we have any calls or voicemails?
No, I did not hear from anyone today. I do not show any raised hands.
Is anyone signed in in chambers to make public comment?
I signed in because I'm here for the position, but no, I'm not here for the vote.
No other signings, okay. Then the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the May 28th, 2024 Board of Trustees meeting, renewal of lodging and entertainment liquor license for the Rizlenda project, renewal of minors' claim hotel and restaurant liquor license, and Resolution Number 23, Series 2024, a resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Silt to set various town fees and deposits from June 11, 2024 to December 31, 2024. Do any board members have any questions or comments on the consent agenda or any of the subtopics?
I have one question on item four.
Please.
The fees. It was the non-compliance for backflow prevention devices. And I mean, I don't have a problem with the fees. It's just, you know, I thought after so long, the town would just shut the people off. Because my question is, whoever can answer, you know, if you have a backflow prevention device that's bad, that could create a problem, you know, you don't necessarily want somebody to go 10 months. Because yeah, sure, the town makes $1,000, but if that backflow is bad and it sucks some nasty oily stuff into the town's water system, then you could have a bigger problem. So I guess I'm just wondering, how far do we go with these fees before we just shut people off?
So I can answer that if you'd like me to. My thought process behind bringing that up is we do shut their water off, but there are a lot of them that are commercial buildings that are just used for storage, so they don't have any motivation to get it done.
Okay.
So my thought process was, yes, we'll shut the water off, but then we will penalize them.
Okay.
Every month until they get it done.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, especially if it's a vacant warehouse and, you know, they'll be shutting me off, I don't care. Okay, so you would do this additionally. Okay.
Yes.
That makes 100% sense there, thank you.
It's in addition to, not in lieu of.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Trustee Poston.
For the liquor license, no issues, no known issues since trustee Seifert's not here, and he usually asks the question. So are we good there?
No, there have not been any issues from the police department or any of the departments in Town Hall who deal with these licenses.
Okay, that was my question.
I don't have any questions. This is an action item, so someone would need to make a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Poston to approve the consent agenda as on the agenda, and that was seconded by trustee Brettinall. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, with me being slow. Do any board members have any conflicts of interest this evening?
None here.
Nope.
None here.
Any agenda changes from staff?
No, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda, introduction of new staff in the police department. I'll turn this over to Chief Kite.
This is our newest officer, Eric, new scheduling issue.
Miss Neve.
Three of the three of you introduced to the next meeting. So wanted to bring.
We can't hear you, Mike.
So I wanted to bring him in front of you and introduce him, so you'll see new faces coming in.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome.
Glad to be here.
Yes, let us know if we can do anything to continue supporting you guys. Thank you for being here.
Wyseal.
Yes, welcome.
Wyseal?
Yeah.
So I grew up in Steenbrook, so a little bit smaller town, it's gotten a lot bigger since.
Oh, he should probably stand there, behind, yeah.
I really liked a small-town community, so I moved out to Utah, kind of got around the big city, wasn't a huge fan, moved closer to family in Grand Junction. And I was looking at some departments out there, but nothing really piqued my interest. But when the corporal and Officer Farnum came down and visited our academy class, we got to talking to them. They seemed very really nice guys, so I was interested in my application, and the police department was very eager and excited to have me on, and that just made me super excited to work here, was the passion that they had and excitement they had for, you know, bringing on someone new. And also being in that small-town community where I can get out there, build some rapport with some good people, and make a bigger impact than I could in a larger city. So all those things combined, Silt was the only application I put in, so.
Wow, it's great.
We're glad you got the job.
Glad you got the job.
Glad you too, yes, yeah.
Very happy about it.
Yeah.
Welcome, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Yes.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. And I'm excited to work for all you guys and hope to make you all proud, so.
Good deal.
Excellent, excellent, welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from me?
Repeat the name again, your name?
Eric Curbs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Officer Curgs?
Officer Curbs.
Curbs, got it.
K E R, yes.
Okay, great, excellent. Thank you and welcome, thank you, Chief Kite.
Thanks again for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have an uneventful evening.
Will do. Luckily, I'm headed home, so.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Rizlenda modification of the liquor license to revise the license premise. Now we'll turn this over to Town Clerk McIntyre.
Thank you, Protem Hanrahan. So before you tonight, I'm not sure if Mitchell is in the room with you?
No, we.
Any applicants?
Mitchell is not here.
Okay, so what happened was that the applicants did make just a few minor changes out on the property that triggered this modification process through the state. They had a food trailer that has moved from the original location that they had told the state where it would be, along with they've added a new bar area and the storage area for the liquor. So that's the only reason they needed to go through the process one more time now that they've made those changes, and everything looks good on staff's end, and we recommend approval.
Any questions, concerns from the board?
Yeah, it looks real straightforward.
I have a quick question about enforcement, because the way that the space is currently set up, the barriers where you're supposed to not take alcohol beyond those barriers, they're not well-defined when you're out in the actual space. Is that going to lead to challenges with enforcement of the policies? Because you're not supposed to have or be consuming alcohol beyond those lines.
It's my understanding that when Deputy Malsbury and Chief Kite were out at the location last week, they did talk to the applicant about that exact same issue to have better signage, so that way it can be kept under a better control then.
And they made a commitment to produce that signage, put it in place?
That was my understanding, yes, but I will follow up to make sure that they have a chance to go out and witness the fact that that signage is up now.
Okay. The question then for the board is, should we allow it before the signage is put in place? Or do we hold off and wait until it is verified by police?
It could very well be up right now, we just haven't been out today to check on that. But we can certainly make it a condition of giving them the modification license once it comes in, holding it hostage, basically, until that has been taken care of.
Hostage.
Yeah.
Strong words.
Make the motion to approve it pending the confirmation that the boundaries have been defined clear?
Yeah, that was the only concern I had. Having looked at it from the dog park on the other side, it's just difficult to know where those actual edges of that allowed area are in practice. Chief Kite, did you want to make a comment on it?
If you do, Chief Kite, come into the microphone, Chief Kite.
I missed a good part of this.
I had asked about the barriers around the new area where alcohol is allowed to be carried around and consumed.
Myself and Chief Moon with the fire department went out early last week and did a walkthrough of the property. The fire barriers are up, we gave them a few more things that they needed to work on, such as fire extinguishers and some basic stuff. But they had everything in place and ready to go. The only thing that we were asking for was an actual gate at the end for the emergency exit, which is down toward the BLM office. As far as I know, I've not been able to check, but I know that they were working on it.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, that was the only concern I had that I wanted to mention.
Are they waiting for this permission to function? Is that to operate? Is that what they're at right now at the new location? So if basically we don't approve, they would get it done? And then the approval would be at the time of?
I know the trailer's already there for the storage.
They have approval to operate, it's just that they've moved structures around the trailer, so they need to do a new license to match up with what they're actually operating under.
So the consequences of us not approving that tonight, what is it? So they would have to wait?
They, I mean.
They'd have to wait two weeks.
They'd have to wait two weeks until we did it. I mean.
They'll do it, they've been very compliant, it sounds like, and I don't think we are at huge risk, so.
Staff has talked to them about that, too, the fact that these things have moved prior to them getting this license submitted, and we are confident that they will take every item serious and do what they need to to make this happen so that they don't get shut down.
So in a way, it's almost staff recommendation to approve.
Yeah, I don't see the point of bringing it back for another meeting and logging up the agenda.
No, they've acted with good intentions throughout our engagement with them on a number of ways.
But I understand accountability, I get that. Yes, we definitely, once we set up those rules, we do expect the town to listen to us, because it's for their own good of the community, and then we are happy to make those decisions, understanding that there is that accountability, so.
And Chief Moon and I will be following up with additional inspections to make sure that everything we set forth and ask them to do, that they get done and follow through with it.
Okay, thank you, Chief Kite.
So if need be, I can report back to the board when these things are completed and have been inspected.
That'd be great.
Thank you, Chief Kite.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so if none of the other board members have any other questions or concerns, I'll open it up.
I have none.
We're good. Okay, the time is now 7:15, and I will open the public hearing for the Rizlenda modification of liquor license to revise the licensed premise. Persons desiring to make a comment on this item, please activate the raise hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, have we received any phone calls or voicemails?
I have heard nothing from no one. I do not show any raised hands.
Is there anyone here in chambers who'd like to comment on this particular item? Seeing none, the time is now 7:16, and I will close the public hearing and open it up to further discussion or a motion.
All right, Mr. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion approving the Riz, you know, correct me if I say this wrong, Rizindla.
Rizlenda.
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 Rizlenda, okay.
Rizlenda.
It's tomato, tomato, it's not a big deal.
Exactly, anyway, anyway, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Rizindla modification liquor license to revise the license premise, including making sure they have proper signage indicating the boundary.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Klassen to approve the Rizlenda modification of liquor license to revise the license premise with the condition of completion of the signage that'll be verified by the Silt Town PD, and that was seconded by trustee Poston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, water plant construction update. I will turn this over to manager man.
And I'm gonna look right at Dan and turn it right over to Dan.
Do-si-do.
Thank you, Dan Galvin, Garnet Construction. This month's update for the Town of Silt Water Project, health and safety, again, no incidents to date on site, and that includes with an increased labor force, so that's always a good thing. Plant staff visitors continue to wear proper PPE, and that's much appreciated. We continue with our controlled entry, accepting deliveries and guests occasionally, and that has worked out well. Our change this month is now we're looking at warm-weather awareness with the heat, making sure everybody stays hydrated, cool, and has shade available. Our construction progress, a couple pictures up on this board there. We continue with de-watering, we've started to backfill the site to allow for the formwork, rebar, and concrete. And just last week, we have poured the two lower slabs, which includes the backwash tank and the chemical containment trenches. And this week, the crews continue with the wall forms and rebar there with a next intended pour on Monday of next week. And those have gone off very well with site access and coordination with plant staff. Schedule, we're pleased to announce or comment that we have received the CD-PHE approval, which we had commented on last time around, so that is good. With that, our CPM schedule dates hold since our last meeting. Again, making progress with the concrete and building the structures on site there. Budget, I apologize to not get the contingency log out to the group this go-around, but there were very minor changes. We've accounted for some of the additional buried or underground pipe work that we did the previous month, and that was in coordination with the town as well to do some additional piping between the water and wastewater plant, and then to get it outside the gate as well. So again, those numbers just hit the contingency log. Again, minor changes, we're still looking at around 2.6-plus million sitting in that contingency log. And then billing to date, we're up to 1.7 million billed for the project to date with all the progress we've been making and the equipment and materials that have been put on order. With that, I'd be glad to open it up to questions.
Are you anticipating any delays in any of the equipment that you have on order?
Our MCC gear is going to be a long lead item. We're looking potentially about 52 weeks to get that. That'll, we'll be able, we'll continue to build, there is a double door, we'll be able to get it inside the building, just a matter of powering up equipment, we'll need that gear on site first. So we do have the, we're close to approvals on that equipment, and we can get that released, that's one we're tracking.
Okay, thank you.
For those of us not in the trades, MCC stands for?
Motor Control Center, so it operates some of the pumps and other equipment on site.
Okay.
Kind of a brain of the operation.
Thank you, trustees.
So generally speaking, the project timeline is still on track?
From our last meeting, yes. We commented then that with the CD-PHE approval process and some of the equipment that was associated with waiting on their approval, we have seen a little bit of a delay in the project, but it, but we're still holding steady there.
Okay, great.
And looking for avenues to make up some of that time.
Yeah, I was really pleased to see the CD-PHE document and the agenda. That was a surprise, a good news surprise.
Yes, that was a good news surprise.
What is this, I see?
Took an arduous amount of time.
Who gets credit for that? That's a big get.
I think we put that on Sam.
Right, Dewberry, they were managing that process.
I think he's been hounding CD-PHE relentlessly to get our permit.
Yeah, because last time you reported, we were saying, what can we do to put more pressure on them?
Yeah.
What dials do we have to turn? And we really didn't have any.
Yeah. I think the credit goes to Sam Franzin, who works with Dewberry, and he's kind of leading this at this point.
That's great, yeah, big thanks to Dewberry. That's a big, big, big piece of this project. I was thrilled to see that in the document. Any other questions, comments? We're good.
Great, and I have July 8th as our next update.
Sounds right, first meeting of July.
Right.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, next item on the agenda, the interview for a Planning and Zoning Commissioner vacancy and appointment to P&amp;Z. Mr. Justin Anderson, would you mind coming up to the table here?
Sure.
And I will turn this over to Town Clerk McIntyre.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And so tonight you have before you Justin Anderson, who has applied for the vacancy on the P&amp;Z board, and you can ask him what questions you like, and if you feel appropriate, appoint him at the end of your conversation.
Hi, Justin, thank you for applying. What's your vision for Silt? Like, what do you see Silt in five years? And maybe even, what's your 10-year view as far as expansion and economical growth and?
Well, I mean, I'm fairly new to this town. I was previously in rifle, but we had to move to Silt, so I currently live right on the corner here, actually. In some ways, I like that Silt doesn't really have that much in the way of, you know, business infrastructure, because it's a very quiet community. Like, living in rifle, you've got Walmart and Market Basket and all that, so the convenience is there. So I mean, I would say that logically, as Silt grows, there's probably going to be more commercial activity and more businesses here. That's kind of what I believe is probably going to happen with Silt as the population increases. But I mean, I'm aware of some of the obstacles. That's, again, next door. We've got a big trailer park with a bunch of problems that I've heard about secondhand. You know, so I would like to see the highest quality of life for the Silt people, and that would be being able to afford to live relative to their income, and also to just have an inventory and availability of units. And some of the things that need to happen for that to occur would, you know, be to be motivated to figure out how to get things done. I also spoke with Derek previously, and he described, you know, a project where you're trying to partner with one of the hospitals, and you're going to build some residential units, but they wanted to put high-income people in that, so the project got completely kiboshed. And so, you know, one of the things that I said to him was, you know, if you have investors that want to do something that doesn't align with the principles of Silt, instead of killing the project, if they're willing, if they're rich and they're willing to invest the money, just make demands, you know, make up, facilitate an agreement that benefits, so the town gets what they want, and they get what they want. But, you know, it has to, you have to get both. You have to get the units for the people that have regular incomes, not just the doctors, but the people that clean the hospital, the nurses, the normal people that make the bulk of the work happen inside a hospital. Because a doctor is very limited as far as what they're doing, so. You know, I feel like I could be a facilitator. I have a background in construction. I started building buildings with my dad when I was very young, so I understand the process of construction. I have a generalized understanding of the needs of most people as far as, you know, needing a place to live, and I have an interest in facilitating deals between investors and making sure that the broader public, serving the broader public is also being done as a byproduct of that deal.
Yeah, I think that's great. I heard from the conversation diversity, you, even though you've been here for a short period of time, not far, been in rifle, you embrace that factor about Silt, that Silt is diverse.
Yes.
And we want to continue to be diverse and to help improve the quality of the life of the people that live here.
Right.
And I really like the points that you made. It's really good.
Yeah, I'm only taking credit from him if he gets approved. No, we had some great conversations. I met Justin and a significant other over at the dog park, which is apparently where I spend most of my free time nowadays. But just in casual conversation about any number of things, he struck me as someone who has the professional background, he has a business acumen, he's familiar with how code works and how to be compliant with it, and he also has some of the visions that we all just heard him express. We need more people like this on planning. Like, after our first conversation, I was like, he should be on P&amp;Z. I don't think I said it to you till the second or third, but it just clicked in my brain. You know, someone who's newer to the community, does a lot of things himself, is a DIY type, that's someone who has the mental resources and capacity to serve a valuable role on planning and zoning. It was just an easy thing for me, you should do this.
And for me, just the interest, improving the quality of life, like, beautiful, those words sound beautifully in my ears. That's great, that you have all the background that you have said, but you also have that passion of helping, wanting to help, improving the lives of people, so that's very positive, very helpful.
Well, I mean, you know, living is one of the core foundations of having a life, so I am pretty passionate about.
Yes.
The idea, especially with the shortage, you know. There are times where I consider, I own property out in New England still, and so there, and my family's out there. So there is times, like when we were looking for a new apartment, where, you know, it crosses my mind, well, should I go home? Because it is so hard to find a place that is suitable and affordable. So I think that this is a very big challenge, and I'm definitely looking at it as something that, you know, is valuable to put some time and energy toward.
Excellent.
So how are you in regards to code? Are you, okay, code is more black and white, this is how it is? Or is code a little bit more gray?
Well, code is meant to standardize building practices so that you can go work on different homes and, you know, the studs are in the same spot, or the water system is done to a certain quality. So there's minimum specifications. It's flexible upwards if you want to upgrade, but you can't compromise below the minimum floor, you know. So if studs are 16 inches on center, you know, you can put them at 10 inches if you want. You can supersede and make something more sound, but it's black and white about minimum requirements, you know. You have to build a quality product so that someone moves into it and it doesn't start falling apart around them.
Uh-huh, okay.
How would you describe your commitment to work with a group in the planning and zoning environment? And understanding and utilizing their resources and their knowledge base? How would you describe would be your best approach to continue making that group great?
So how would I?
Work with them.
Work with a group of, of people?
Planning and zoning specifically.
I mean, you know, I, I would, I, I look forward to sitting down with people, understanding what their goals are, figuring out how that aligns with the town's goals, and bringing those things together in some sort of middle ground. Where, you know, it's meeting the needs of the community and it's meeting the needs of the person doing the project. You know, I've always been a, a kind of a, a technical person. But as I get older, I become more and more interested in dealing with people and, you know.
Understanding.
Understanding people, understanding their needs, understanding how to get people to come together on a project. So I, I think as I've gotten older, I've, you know, I used to kind of say, oh, I hate dealing with people. There's so many problems. There's, you know.
People are great.
There's all this conflict, you know. So I can go, you know, do something technical, and this little object is, is inanimate, you know. So I can just figure out the drawing and do whatever needs to be done with it. But, you know, as I, you can't get things done without people being involved. So I not only want to, you know, help meet the needs of these different groups, but I also want to expand, you know, my skills in that arena of dealing with people and making things happen.
It's all about personal growth too, right?
Yep.
It's great.
What are your thoughts on commercial growth and how they relate to Silt?
Well, I mean, I, I would hope that the community would have input on, you know, what kind of commercial growth we're looking for. Because, you know, some people want a, a data center, like a Google data center, to be in their local community. Some people want a Walmart, other people don't. So it's, it's not really about, you know, what I want. It would be about finding out the, the willpower, the, the will of the people and, you know, taking that and, and bringing that into the, the council. And making sure that the people, the community is being represented. If the Silt community, when you poll them, doesn't want commercial expansion, and they like being a bedroom community that's quiet, their children can play on the, the streets, because there's not big trucks going to, you know, down the street all the time, you know, then I would want to represent that. And if Silt is looking to become more of an economic powerhouse and get that kind of tax revenue that you're going to get from a large business operating locally, then I, I would do that. I, I'm not, you know, for me personally, the biggest impact is on the residential housing side. The commercial side, I can go either way on it. I, I could see, it might be great for Silt to expand and have that tax revenue, but if, if people don't want it, if the, the ranchers, you know, don't want that kind of activity on the roads, and, and the people don't want that, then I would go with that. I, I don't really have a, a dog in the fight. I don't have an agenda, you know. I, I could go either way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So you're knocking open a Google data center?
I mean.
But you will do the wi, but you will do the low voltage wiring?
If the community wants it, then we'll, we'll, we'll build it up. But yes, I'll also do the low voltage.
All right, this is an action item.
Okay, Mr., do we have any more discussion, questions?
No, you just asked some good questions. I'm good.
Yeah, unless anybody else has any comments or questions, I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion to appoint Justin Anderson to the Planning and Zoning Commission to P&amp;Z.
Let's second that.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Poston and seconded by trustee Brenton to appoint Justin Anderson as our new Planning and Zoning Commissioner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
My pleasure.
I will be in touch with Mr. Anderson tomorrow by email, and we'll take it from here.
Okay.
Welcome, should I take you?
We don't waste any time. There's stuff to do.
Okay, sure. I assume I should stay for the rest of the minutes?
We'd like to.
It's entirely up to you.
Relevant to, is there going to be planning? Is there going to be planning and zoning agenda?
No, there's not, nothing, I don't think there's.
There's nothing that's directly related to planning and zoning.
Okay. Well, if there's, if there's nothing relevant to, to me, then I think I'll excuse myself.
All right, thank you.
Thanks again.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
See you next month.
Have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the annual trash talk and diversion report update. And I will turn this over to Town Manager Ma'am.
We have Doug Goldsmo and Bill Serrano here from Mountain Waste to
I laughed when I.
Give you an update on our waste diversions.
Oh, it's every, good to see you guys again. God, this time goes so fast, huh?
Seems like it was just a year ago.
Huh?
Seems like it was just a year ago.
I know, right?
One year and that one ago. We come to you with two, two things. We have the annual rate increase for the trash service and the diversion report showing where we are. I believe the information I'm front, I'd like to start with the diversion report. Last year at this time, we were at about 19, a little over 19%, and this year at 17.8%. And if you look at that, I think that that is driven by the weather we had in April. I mean, we know when you guys start drinking beer, when the bottles come out and things come out, that the recycling gets a little heavier as this, as it heats up. We can tell what's going on. And we are essentially a month behind with the, with the rain that we had in April and the weather that we had in April. I just don't think the people got out, started barbecuing and do those kind of things in that weather. And now we're starting to see that come up. So the, the numbers are ahead of the state average, certainly. The state of Colorado averages about 16% diversion. We've been stuck at that number for the last many, many, many years. Most communities of your size in the rest of the state are in the 6, 7, 8%. The mountain communities, the higher you get up in the mountain communities, are higher in that 25%. And that's what helps that state average. You are at the state average, but for your size community, well ahead of the game. But again, year over year, it looks like you're about a month behind, and I attribute that to the weather we had. Want to see if you have any questions for us regarding recycling or trash? You know, we are your trash company. We do a lot of check-ins. Everybody seems to be happy with us. I want to see what your feedback was.
I just have, I have a quick question on your, on your rates.
Oh, sure.
It says two-yard sewer plant, then it says two-yard wastewater plant.
Yes.
Are, are there two dumpsters over there, or is that?
I believe one at each, or it's.
Okay, okay. So it's the one in the water side, one in the, okay.
That is correct. And we, and we currently are hauling, and they really stepped it up, the sludge from the wastewater plant. We, we are, I gotta call every two, three days at least. We're setting up for success. We haul the sludge to the organics pit, and they've really ramped that up.
Oh, okay. I guess I didn't realize you guys carry the sledge away from the plant as well.
Yes, we do it in roll-off containers. Right, currently it's every Wednesday and Friday.
Oh, okay.
Was once a week for the winter, and they, talking to Daryl and the guys, they've stepped that up, and, and their process is, I think they, they got, not behind, but a, a big backlog. So we've been hauling twice a week.
Uh-huh, gotcha. And where does that go, out of curiosity?
Goes through the organics pit at the South Canyon landfill.
Oh, okay.
Turns it into mulch. Most of that goes to C dot for the sides of the roads. They, they spread it out. That's where our cardboard all goes. So we run a separate cardboard route up and down the valley. That particular process of bio solids, your grease traps and things like that, they have a chemistry problem. He is nitrogen-rich and a little too liquid to get good compost, so they need a carbon source and a bulking agent. Eh, cardboard. So we run a separate truck throughout the valley that just picks up cardboard. So we're able to dump that into his soup pile that makes that process work.
Oh, okay.
So that's the pure cardboard, but the cardboard that's mixed, because we collect everything mixed, that does go down to Denver and get sorted.
Oh, okay, okay.
Then that gets recycled, that cardboard.
Correct. Your, your single stream recycling from the town, that goes, we haul that to Denver to the facilities there. But because we run a separate cardboard route, we're able to deal with it locally and those who need cardboard. It's a little cheaper and beneficial use locally.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks.
Sure. What else can we answer on the, on the recycle side, and then I'll peel into the rates for you guys?
Are we expecting to keep at the increase to two pickups per week at the plant for the balance of the year?
My guess is no, no. I think he's, he's looking for the next couple of months of that, and then they'll, they'll have gotten it. For years, we were once a week. And I think they got a little behind, or there was some, a couple of issues. It, it piled up. Now we're getting through that, and we'll be down the back to once a week. That's my understanding.
Okay.
But if they need it more, we're, they need it five days, and we, we can do that.
Just a phone call away.
Yes.
There you go.
We're also the, installing a new system in the wastewater plant that's going to dry the sludge further, so that will reduce the number of trips we have to make.
When is that expected to be finished?
We've ordered the equipment. I don't have a date in terms of when it's going to arrive. But that will help, you know, reduce the twice a week that we're doing right now. Yep. Well, and what will be, when you, when you take the water out, it cuts down the weight, so you can haul more at a time. Yep.
In terms of diversion, you said that the Roaring Fork Valley and, and they're doing a higher percentage? 23 to 25, 23, 23, we were at 16, 17?
You're going to get up, back up again. The winter is lower, the summer is higher, and with that, all the moisture we had in April and early May put us behind. We're going to start ramping up into that 22, 23% this summer like we have in the past.
Yeah, you guys are right at 17, 85, just under 18.
Is there an economic benefit to the residents of Silt to divert more?
Economic? No.
Environmental? Yes.
Environmental, yeah, absolutely. It costs significantly more to manage and handle recycling than it does trash. Basically four to one. It's four times more expensive to manage the recycling stream than the trash stream, simply because we haul it to Denver. There's still a tipping fee at the end, but your trash is touched once and into the back of the truck, and when that truck is full, it goes to one of the two landfills, whichever side of town he's on. When we pick up and the recycling truck is finally full, that truck goes to Carbondale. It is then emptied and mixed with all the other recycling into transport trailers, touched again, where it goes all the way to Denver, given to the MRF Material Recovery Facility there, and then broken up into its components and shipped off. So the, it's the extra transport costs. The tipping fee is very similar. It's about the same to give them the product, and, and they charge us by tonnage, almost the same as the landfill. It's just you gotta get it there.
Okay.
Do we want to talk about rates?
Sure. So if, if you guys recall, last year we held rates. We came in here and just held, held the rates steady. This year, we are asking for a 4% increase. Per the contract, it's based on the CPI transportation year-over-year increase. Past 12 months, 4% is the average. Per the contract, we, we can't go over 5% or come in here and request anything more than 5%. So we're in here asking for four. Obviously, our costs continue to escalate. But in real terms for the residents here, currently they're paying $7.35 a week. 4% would add 29 cents a week, so the new rate would be $7.64. That averages $1.26 a month for the standard service. Seniors do have a little bit better rate. So that is currently at $6.52. That would be an additional 26 cents with the 4%. So the new rate would be $6.78, or it averages out to a buck 13 a month with the 4% increase. And then the other rate schedules are at the senior center, the town shop, the sewer plant, and the wastewater plant. Those are the commercial cans that we service for the town. And those, those appropriately are, with the 4%, like a two-yard at the senior center would go up 58 cents a week. The six-yarder at the town shop would be a buck 56 more a week. And then the two-yarder at the sewer plant would be 58 cents more a week. And similar at the wastewater plant, same-sized container, 58 cents a week. And we bill everybody here in Silt per week. That's why we price it that way. So we're here to ask for a 4% bump, and that would go into effect August 1. That's the anniversary of the, of the contract.
So it's just approving another year of service under revised terms?
Pardon me?
We're, we're, in effect, we're approving, the action item is to either approve or not approve what specifically?
A rate increase.
The rate increase. The, the, the term of the contract is a two-year term. We're in the second of the two-year terms. The, the question is, per the contract, it is a CPIT number for the increase, not to exceed 5%. So we come before you to say, here is the term of the contract, here is the CPI. We'll start this, the end of, of that month. We didn't do one last year. We're asking for this now. So the only thing we're doing is the 4% increase.
And the next year's brand-new contract.
Okay, that, that's what I wasn't clear on.
Oh, yes.
On the agenda item, it just says it's a report update, but then it classifies it as an action item, so that's why I was asking the question. If somebody's going to make a motion, what is said motion?
Just to approve the 4% increase.
Correct, yes.
Isn't, isn't, did you have a three-year contract?
It is a three-year, but it was, it was three years, though.
Yeah.
Three-year contract, and so in year one, you had a base rate. In year two, you did not ask for an increase to the base rate, so in year three, you are asking for a 4% CPI.
Correct.
And, and I would just note that, that there really are two ways that Mountain, the Mountain Waste Contract kind of helps buffer their operations from unexpected price changes. So one is the CPI escalation. There's a, also a fuel protection charge that if diesel goes beyond a certain point, that there's an additional amount that gets added to the monthly, or to the weekly service cost.
We have to come before you to ask for that.
It's, it's not automated. It's not.
No, we have.
Doesn't update itself when a certain threshold is reached.
We have always come to you and say, here's what's happening.
Yep.
This is what's going on. We ask this, this thing. We, nobody's ever doing anything that's not as open as we possibly can make it.
I would say my history of working with the gentleman on the board, I've never, I've really appreciated the openness, the communication, and the fact that when they have raised rates, because obviously, like, the situation, there's the 4% increase, they could ask for 5%, but they're asking for four. They're just asking to cover their, their additional costs. They're not looking to get rich off of, off of Silt. They're just ma, they're just wanting to take care of trash, continue to provide us a service. They've been doing a good job, and so I would be happy to make the motion if we're ready to do that, if we want some more discussion.
No, I mean, nobody wants to see anything go up, but this is real reasonable here.
But it's, it's the cost, it just is what it is.
Exactly.
Do you say, gentlemen, that fuel prices in the last year have gone up less or more than 4%?
Fuel, in year-over-year?
Oh, more. But fuel is.
Year-over-year. It's the parts, it's the bits. So we took possession of a truck about two and a half months ago. That was ordered in 2021, supposed to be delivered 2022. We got it.
Just checking my watch, because I don't think it's 2022.
When we ordered that truck, it was spec'd to 200, no, excuse me, $323,000. It was delivered at 500 and change.
Holy cow.
Yeah. I know we tell our guys all the time, you're driving a really fancy Italian sports car. It's bigger.
But that, you know.
Not as aerodynamic.
Not as aerodynamic.
It is, it is, you know, fuel is, it's the tires, it's the wiper blades, it's the bits and pieces or hoses that keep a truck going that are in that 40% three-year, two and a half year 40%. It's, CPI does not take into effect some of the things that we deal with. Getting a turbo for a truck, I'll forbid when one goes out. Sorry. Getting a turbo for a truck, I'll forbid when one goes out. Sorry, I'm gonna touch anybody.
That was why I asked. I was thinking to your comment, Trustee Brittenall, this is, it's not just the cost of doing business. It's, it's like, it's like the water. Nobody knows or cares about how much it costs until it stops working. Then no price is too much to pay to fix it. It's just, it's the cost of doing business and four percent seems entirely reasonable. I've not had any problems or nor have I heard from a single citizen that they had a problem with the services you provide, ever.
That's great.
Well, our goal, and I, as I have had discussions with your old and your new town manager, our goal is in this is nobody ever stops you in the grocery store and complains about us. So if we, if nobody's ever complaining about us, we're doing our job. We want, we don't want people to think about us. If they're thinking about us, we're not doing our job. So I'm here to remind you, you're not thinking about us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments, or want to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor Portem, I'll make a motion to approve the four percent increase for the trash services.
You'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Brittenall to approve the four percent increase in costs for trash service. And that was seconded by Trustee Klassen. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
We can say effective August one.
Effective August first, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you, Manager Man. I always forget some part. Well, we'll try that again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Have you all downloaded the app?
Okay.
Mountain Lace app reminds you when your trash day sends you a, a text. Says, hey, don't forget trash day.
You don't want to have the app conversation with me.
It might be useful for people. So thanks for speaking publicly. Yes.
Maybe, maybe that's some.
Yes, there is value for people that use this service.
We could get in a newsletter.
Yes.
Okay.
Just a reminder, hey, this app is, it tells you on a holiday week that it's a day later.
Yeah.
It's handy.
There's also Waste Preserve. You type in pizza box, it tells you if it's recycling.
If it's recyclable or not, that kind of stuff.
It's a good resource. Good to put it out there. There may be people that.
Is it bilingual?
Yes.
Okay.
Great job.
It is, actually.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Thanks again, gentlemen.
Yeah, the, the trash schedule is on the town's website as well.
I just put it out Thursday night regardless. If they don't pick it up Friday, they pick it up the next day.
Oh, that's true.
The bears, are we having?
We don't, I haven't had any bears issues, at least knock on wood.
Yeah, so.
Okay, the next.
Good to know your trash schedules.
Next item on the agenda is the Middle Colorado Watershed Council discussion regarding the Salt River Preserve ponds and potential use of Rudy wa- Rudy water rights for augmentation. I'll turn this item over to Attorney Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Portem. So earlier, the Board of Trustees and members of staff and public to the degree they wanted to show up were out at the Silk River Preserve. We did a work session. Where in part, we looked at three ponds that are out on the town's property out there. Those ponds are in the process of being kind of revegetated and various recreational amenities put in to allow the public to better use and enjoy those ponds. The, those ponds are decreed water rights that the town acquired when the purchase of the Silk River Preserve happened about thirteen, fourteen years ago. But the nature of those ponds are such that they're junior water rights, meaning that they are subject to call. And because the ponds serve an important aesthetic environmental purpose, we believe that the master plan for the Silk River Preserve contemplates that these ponds are going to remain full, available for the public's use and very, available for an environmental purposes. But in order to do that from a regulatory standpoint, we need to undertake a water court proceeding where we will probably do two things. One is we'll make or have our engineers make sure that the ponds are sized to the level that, well, let me rephrase that. That we get a decree for the ponds in the size that they actually exist on the land. In other words, you decree a water right for a pond for a certain volume. We need to go in, double-check that volume, make sure that the decree we have is large enough for these ponds. If we need additional pond storage space, we can get a, an enlargement water right decreed for that. Then the second thing we need to do is to have the court decree a plan for augmentation for these water rights. Because they're junior, that means that the evaporation from the ponds is subject to call at certain times. And as opposed to having the pond water levels drop and having the utility and recreational and aesthetic benefit of those ponds diminished by lowering the water level. What we will do is we will have the court say, we will make available replacement water. And that the replacement water will allow us to keep those ponds topped off during the, the summer season. In order to do that, we're going to look at a couple of options for what's termed augmentation water. That's replacement water made available to the river. One source would be some dry up under the Rising Sun ditch. The Rising Sun is the source of irrigation for the Silk River Preserve. And to the degree that there have been little areas that have been dried up through the conversion of this property to its current agricultural recreational state that doesn't impair a future potential irrigated use for a little, little spaces of property, we might ask the court to allow us to consider have, well, to have that dry up quantified. That's then made available back to the river to make up for our evaporative depletions. Another potential source is the town does own some what are called consumptive use credits in the Lotion Cran ditch. We acquired those, I don't know, about fifteen years ago, again, as a source of augmentation. Those are somewhat fungible. We might be able to apply that to some of the evaporation. And then third thing would be that we, the town maintains contracts for water in Rudy reservoir in the amount of at least three hundred and sixteen acre feet. We currently use very little of that. My, I think it's under ten acre feet a year is what we use. And that's not to say the reason we have that water is it will facilitate growth in the future. We want to make sure we have a robust amount of, of that water available for growth. But we also have that water to make uses with the town now that are important to the town. And so in conjunction with, again, the workshop that we did out on, at the river preserve, I wanted to answer questions, but also get direction from the board that we move forward with getting these water rights properly decreed and augmented so that they can continue to function for what really is developing as a wonderful amenity for the town in the form of the Silk River Preserve. So that's my little presentation. Happy to answer any questions you might have and then again, ask for some direction from the board.
Any questions, comments from the board?
The water that feeds these ponds, are they the Lotion Cran ditch or the Rising Sun ditch?
The, the water comes from the Lotion Cran. We have our, our on-the-ground expert, Joe Lundin, with us today. That water though is, like, when we go in and get these decrees modified, we probably will ask the Lotion Cran ditch if we can have what's called a, a junior enlargement in the ditch specific to filling these ponds. Because right now they're kind of being nice to us. They're allowing us to take some water out of the ditch and run it through the ponds. The wastewater can go back into the ditch for uses further down ditch, but we don't currently have a decreed use in that ditch for this purpose. And Joe, if you have comments on that, please.
Yeah, and we made a deal with them that when we repaired the head gate, if for some reason they have a ditch problem, they're able to dam the ditch right at our head gate and let the water go through our ponds and straight to the river so they can dry up their dits. So we're kind of working together with them.
Like being neighbors.
Kind of like that.
Is, is there, do we know anything about the workforce impact of replenishing the water? What, what is the, the workforce cost?
To the town?
Yeah.
I, I mean, Joe, you, you know, we, we do definitely go out occasionally and open and close head gates and those kinds of things to get the water moving.
Town staff spends approximately an hour and a half each day of the week, five days a week out there. Just moving the side roll and irrigating the bottom half. And so, and we do get a little money back. We hay the upper part and we sell that hay. And that pays, helps pay for our employee to be out there.
But keeping the water up consistently for the use cases that you described earlier, Attorney Sawyer, there won't be a, a significant workforce impact in terms of the time that the town staff has to expend managing that process or those processes?
No.
Okay. That was my only concern. I, I, having now seen the amenity again for the first time, I think it's been maybe a month, maybe a month and a half since I've been out there. It looks fantastic. And if this is something we can do relatively simply to maintain that and make it more useful to our community now while still preserving that access for future uses, this is a very easy decision for me. And the decision is yes. When do we start?
When do we continue? So yes.
I can't, I literally can't think of a reason not to do it, except for the status quo.
It's a beautiful space. It's great. It's a huge asset for the citizens to have the opportunity to get out there and see. It's very peaceful. There are a couple of swings out there and it's just so much fun, just looking over the river. And then there is a walking path that you look over and you see the mountains and it's just, it's lovely. Here, like the diversity of birds singing. And it, the finished product is gonna be great, but step by step. So whatever direction you need from us to continue, Attorney Sawyer, I think we are all in agreement.
Yeah. What do you need from us to take next steps?
I, I think.
Water rights.
Yep.
Go.
Think I've got it. And we'll move forward with getting, keeping this project moving in the right direction. And you, you know, you both, with the board's direction and your staff's implementation, you, you really have a wonderful asset out there and the community should, should take fifteen minutes and drive across the river and, and go see what the town has there, because it's, it's beautiful. Yeah.
Agreed.
And I have one more question. It says, you know, possible creation of a larger recreational pond. Does this cover that or would we have to go back and find more?
That would be something additional. And, and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up because, you know, there is a master plan that was done and adopted by the, the board that is online. It's on the town's website. And that master plan did contemplate having yet another pond out there in addition to these three that would be more of a boating, fishing pond. And while that certainly is something we can look at implementing in the future, the, as a policy step from the Middle Colorado River Watershed Council indicated, the neighboring property, which is a series of gravel pits, are eventually going to be reclaimed. And those larger pond spaces, that we do have an agreement with that operator that if the Division of Wildlife is not interested in owning and controlling those ponds, they come to the town. Or at least the town has the option to say, yes, we, we'd like to take them. Those ponds certainly would be more conducive to kind of recreational opportunities, whereas these are smaller ponds that are perhaps more conducive to contemplative and, and meditative uses out there. So again, we're not foreclosing an opportunity for a larger recreational pond of the river preserve, but I think the idea is let's wait and see what happens on the neighboring property. Maybe that actually becomes part of the river preserve in some way. With enhanced recreational opportunities on that side of the dividing line. And this kind of serves a different set of recreational opportunities.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a great idea. I don't have any further questions.
Okay. You're all set?
We'll, we'll get things moving.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the appointment of members to the Strategic Planning and Town Code Committee. I'll turn this over to Manager Man.
Thank you. At the May twenty-eighth meeting, you decided that you would form a committee, a special purpose committee to help out with the impending changes to our town code as it primarily, primarily related to our housing code and what we're going to do for affordable housing, et cetera. We did approach the Planning and Zoning Committee as to whether there was going to be any interest in having one or two members of the Planning and Zoning Committee serve on this special purpose committee. And we did have some interest from both Commissioners Berto and Wood. But they wanted some additional information in terms of what the time commitment was going to look like. And so I tried to lay that out. I think, you know, for the most part, it's probably a once-a-month type committee, maybe once every two months, depending upon the volume of work we have to do on the code. But when we get into kind of that heavy period when we're going to move past our housing needs assessment and get into actually setting the policies and then changing the code, that's probably going to be a period of time where we're going to be asking those folks to be there twice a month, so that we can move that along and it doesn't languish for an extended period of time. I will say that in the meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commissioners, they did express not they, they expressed a desire to perhaps be compensated for their meetings. And so I don't know that that's anything we have to address tonight, but I think coming up is part of a budget discussion. The board may want to consider whether you start paying people to attend these meetings. And I, and I guess the, the reason I bring this up and perhaps why it was brought up at the committee, commissions level is that we're having problems finding people that, that are willing to serve on, on some of these groups. We did talk about having an additional citizen member. We've had a vacancy on the Vale Committee for quite some time and that needs to be filled. And we're just not finding people that are willing to do that. We have a vacant board position that we haven't had anybody express any interest in, in, in serving. So it's hard to pull people from the community, but we're, I think we would like to try. But again, for a later discussion as part of the budget, it may be something that you want to think about, a per diem or a per meeting compensation. It wouldn't be a huge dollar amount, but would be something that every once in a while, somebody can go out to dinner, type of thing, just a token. But I think at this point, if you recall in our discussion on the twenty-eighth, both Trustees Klassen and Mayor Portem, hand-to-hand expressed interest in serving on this group. So when I, I would suggest that you at least appoint the board members into this group. And optional, whether you want to add the Commissioners Berto and Wood to the group and let them to either say yes or decline. And then we'll still search for somebody from outside our, our structure. Excuse me, to fill in. Because it's always better to have a odd number than an even number.
Yeah.
I don't know why.
There's no ties.
I'm sorry?
There are no ties on anything you vote on.
Correct.
Unless you have people absent, like.
That never happens.
Or resign.
We are, we are divided.
Exactly. I mean, I'd, I'd still be interested in doing it.
I'm very much interested in doing it. I, I sat in on the P and Z meeting and, and some topics that came up reinforced the idea that we need to get moving on this. And I'd like to be as involved as I reasonably can be. To that end, in terms of scheduling, once a month is doable, obviously depending on the day and time of that once per month. But if then we need to move up to two times per month as we get through budgeting. But if then we need to move up to two times per month as we get through budgeting season or any significant thresholds or milestones that we need to get over the finish line, that's entirely reasonable. Separate from that, but integrated with that as well is the idea of providing per diem payment. I think waiting for people's better angels to show up isn't going as well as we had hoped. So we need to come up with other incentives to increase participation. I, I think this should definitely be an agenda item. I don't know if our next meeting agenda is already chock full, but I think we need to discuss whether or not we should do it. And if the answer is yes, we should, then we should talk about how.
Are you talking about the per diem?
The per diem amount.
Okay.
For attending, for attending committee meetings. And do we want it just to be for citizens?
During budgeting season, I think it would be like Administrator Jim Mann suggested budgeting season it would be. I do know that.
Talk about it.
There are a lot of, I, I know, I can only, not just know, but imagine how much, you know, taking up the town manager, administrator, and he's, he's trying to do and he's doing a lot also to manage our time. And then I would think like high ticket items right now for us to be really addressing and bringing it up in the agenda, but budgeting, budgeting season for sure, I think we should have a discussion on, just like separating and assigning and prioritizing.
Yeah. I agree. I say we wait till budget season just because, you know, the Vale Board doesn't get paid anything either, so.
It would encompass all boards or all committees rather.
I think, yes, there you go.
But if they know it's coming, you can start doing some of the math on it now, like, oh, there are this many seats, there are this many committees.
Yeah.
At this dollar amount, this is the net cost.
It might be worth having a, a short discussion about it, not coming up with a dollar amount or anything like that. We can have a short discussion when the mayor's here and maybe trustee Seaver's here, have a few more voices to give their input. And then that would lead you into having things prepared for the budget session, season and going in from there.
I, I think we probably have some time.
Yeah.
On the next agenda where we can spend 15 minutes.
It doesn't need to be a long.
Just an info item.
Just an info item, get, get a better read from the broader group that then we can translate into a budget line item for 2025.
Sounds good to me.
Sounds like a plan.
That works.
So do you get a motion to appoint them for this committee or?
Yes.
But there's a couple of different ways we can make the motion, right? There's, are we just going to appoint people on the Board of Trustees to it or manager man suggestion?
We invite.
Do we volunteer the P and Z people that they're also on the committee?
I would volunteer them. And leave the sweet talking to me.
Having been in the audience during P and Z, they were enthusiastic about participating in it. They weren't like, oh, if I have to, it was, they both stepped up and said, I'm in.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would like to make a motion to appoint members to a Strategic Planning and Town Code Committee. These members would consist of currently Trustees Claussen and Mayor Protem Hanrahan from the Board of Trustees and then also Commissioners Berto and Wood from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then if we did have any, we're leaving open a position for a community member if someone were to step forward and want to be involved.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion by Trustee Brenton. That was very complicated and I'm not going to be able to repeat all of it. We are going to establish the Strategic Planning and Town Code Committee and we're going to appoint the following members from the Board of Trustees, Trustee Claussen and myself, Mayor Protem Hanrahan, as well as Commissioners Berto and Commissioner Wood from the Planning and Zoning Commission. All those in favor?
Any member.
Aye.
Any member from the public? Thank you, Trustee Claussen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
See, that was almost exactly.
That's true.
That was a great job.
I tried, I tried, I tried.
He did good.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Administrator and Staff Reports. I will turn this over to Manager Mann.
You have my report in your packet as well as all the staff reports. I don't know if there's any, any questions. Just a couple of additions that I thought I'd kind of give you a heads up. I, I, I did mention in my staff report that the next meeting, we're going to have a kind of layout budget calendar and maybe think about some very bold, broad initiatives that will help us frame the budget. But I also wanted to kind of give you just a, a look into the future of what we've got for work sessions coming up. And I, you know, you know what, we're trying to keep them down to once a month. And so in June, we'll do the budget planning, calendar priorities, but we'll also do some additional discussion about the affordable housing planning, the timeline. We're going to put some teeth into that. Our RFP should be going out or RFQ should be going out shortly for a consultant to help us with the study. And then in July, our plan is to have the traffic and traffic calming discussion that was originally scheduled for June. However, our engineer is out of the country. Seems to be a trend these days, but he's out of the country for the June 24th meeting. So we won't be able to get anything done for that one. Director Lundin did let me know today that we've concluded all our studies. So now it's just got to get in Engineer Walter's hand for him to put the final touches on it and we'll have a good discussion about that in July. And then also at the July 22nd meeting, we're going to talk a little bit about the 10-year capital plan in terms of what's on the horizon for us to be doing in terms of looking out into the future. Those are the next two. I don't have anything so far for August or September. And then we get into budget season, so we're going to try to keep the work sessions outside of that kind of light, only for things that we need to. But that's, that's everything I'm reporting on right now. I know, I, I, Mayor Protem's laughing over there because I know he's got a big one for me to have to jump on.
But, but I haven't, see, I'm just holding that until.
I know, I know.
Every work session you add.
You're, you're chomping at the bit.
We're quid pro quo, you and I.
Yeah. It has to do with transportation. But we'll get there.
Absolutely. There's, there's definitely a lot to do and we have to have the work sessions. They're not always pleasant, but they are always necessary.
Yes.
So that's what we signed up for.
As, as long as the work sessions are, we're achieving things and they're productive, I don't mind them. When we're having work sessions that we're just talking about, or just the same thing again and again, there's no point in that.
They're not, they're not supposed to be therapy sessions. They're supposed to be work getting done and having outcomes.
As long as they're productive, I have no problem with them.
I think we should also take a, a moment to acknowledge that Joe Lundin is now officially, if I'm understanding, our Director of Public Works. That was also in your staff report.
It was.
Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Congratulations, Joe. Welcome.
Congratulations. We're thrilled to have you on the team.
He's always been.
In this role.
Okay, okay.
What are you new here? Come on, man. And I was, I was going to ask about the CD-PHE, but.
We took care of that.
That got left out in the backyard. I was very pleased to see that again. I was, again, because of at our last meeting, it was, we don't know, someday maybe, not anytime soon, we don't have any way to apply pressure and now it's done.
And I cannot emphasize enough how much that was bothering Sam Franzen from Dewberry that we could not get that answer because everybody was on a little bit of pins and needles because CD-PHE could have come back and said, oh, by the way, you need double this, which throws a wrench in our guaranteed maximum price. Not sure why the process took as long as it did for us to get a, a permit for something that they were working with us all along, but it didn't.
There's a term for it. It's called bureaucracy.
Yeah.
I had another quick question for Director Centeno. How did the first movie in the park go? I wasn't able to attend.
I was there. It was fabulous for a major part of it, but I'll let Nicole, Nicole, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Director Poston.
I might, I might have to go wake her up.
Nicole.
She's in her office.
Yeah. Great turnout until she comes over.
I'm sure she's very focused on her work.
I guess.
I wasn't meaning, I didn't mean, I was just assuming you'd turn on the microphone or something. I apologize.
I was trying to turn it on. It told me I couldn't unmute myself. Sorry, I'll come to the microphone. Their first movie in the park went well. We had just a little under 200 people and.
Wow, that's big.
Yeah, it went well. Yes.
And when is the next one?
The next one is in July and it'll be the movie Migration.
Nice.
Yes, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
See if I've got it on mine.
I think it's July 26th. It is July 26th. Yes.
200 people. That's a tremendous showing.
Yeah.
Especially for the first one of the year. Because usually the word has to get out a little organically through, through the grapevine, so to speak. And then it seemed, when I've gone in years past, it was the later movies that had more and more people at them. So if we're starting at this number.
Yeah, it was good. People were eager to get out. It was a, a wet spring, so people were welcoming some warmer weather for summer activities.
Nice.
Yes.
That is fantastic. Good work.
Yeah, it was fun.
That was the only question I had. Thank you. Anybody else have questions for staff?
Yes, I have a question. So congratulations, Joe, on the Polter's Director's job. So who's, who's in your old role?
Right now it's Ivan Elliott. We're going through the process right now to see if anybody else in house would like that.
Oh, okay.
So hopefully we'll have a decision by the end of the week.
Cool, right on. Did you have a lot of competition?
No, Darryl.
Oh, okay. Anyway, congratulations. Thank you. And I have a question for Nicole. So looking at your report, Marietta Food Truck Site Plan, is that a, another new one?
It is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they purchased the lot right next to Dollar General. There's three lots next to Dollar General. They purchased all three. So if they, they're in the process of, it's been a little delayed, but they're in the process of putting in a land use application to dissolve the lot lines to make it one large property because they want to cross lot lines.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Gotcha. All right. And then I, I noticed the lot line adjustment was abandoned. Was that the one up on Fifth and Orchard?
Correct. That property sold.
Okay, because I saw it for sale and I was like, wait a minute, it's for sale, they're going through, okay.
It sold and the new owner does not seem to be interested in continuing with that subdivision.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then the only other thing I saw, Western Slope Veterans Coalition was, is continued?
It was continued from the Planning and Zoning Commission to revamp their proposal and come back in front of P and Z in August.
Okay.
At which point P and Z would make a recommendation to come to the board. The board will be the final decision making body.
Okay. All right, thanks, Nicole.
Yes.
Any of the trustees, any questions for town staff? Okay, then the next item on the agenda is updates from the board. I will start with Trustee Poston.
All right, I will continue on to my therapy mode. I will continue to talk about civility, civility at home, civility with people in the community, civility amongst trustees, civilities among these people in the workplace, staff. Because if we have civility and we treat people with respect and understanding in human beings, we accomplish a lot more. And with that overall professionalism that we are here to accomplish, things, right? We are here to live, right? We spend a huge amount of our times in the workplace. And as community leaders, it's, it's really important for us to, as a board, to have that civility so we are, we have that freedom to express ourselves and we have that freedom to really express our thoughts. And I think when there is civility, there is an openness to accomplish a lot more. And I'll continue on emphasizing that because I always take the treatment of a human being very seriously and, and I just want to always treat everybody with kindness, respect and care. And I, I just wanted to make that comment and that's my ideal, that's my goal, that's my objective. And by having those as base values, I hope for us to accomplish great things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Brenton.
Well said. Just things to pay attention to, obviously summertime, school's out, slow down, especially in the, on the weekends and times watching for kids, playing around the parks and all that kind of stuff. And just also there's pay attention to your watering schedules, all those different things. We have the code enforcement out now that can help us with that, helping people pay attention to those times. But obviously if we use water when we're supposed to, it's going to work better and everybody will have the right amount. So it worked out for everybody well too.
Okay. Trustee Claussen?
I just have a couple of things and I probably should mention these during staff reports, but on Ninth Street, and I know it wasn't the town, but there's that patch by the good to go and the thing sunk.
And the process of getting fixed, that was an Excel energy patch, which another contractor did. So Excel is supposed to be getting that fixed.
Okay. Thank you. And yeah, like I said, I know it wasn't, I'm not trying to, you know, blame the town. I'm just, I'm just, I knew it was a contractor that did that, so anyway. And then I guess the streets items, we had budgeted the three items. Do you think we can get all three of those or?
For.
Oh, it was Home Avenue, Ballard Avenue and the Crosswalk.
Crosswalk is a, there's more involved in that than just putting up a crosswalk. That's going through CDOT, that, CDOT won't approve that, being that the road is so wide at the moment. So that's going to take some engineering to narrow the road, get rid of some of the right-hand turn, left-hand turn, center turn, put in some islands and slow down the traffic. So that may not get done initially.
Okay. All right, I was just curious about that. And then I guess the only other thing, Mayor Protem, I mean, you attended the P and Z meeting, right?
I did, yes.
Did you comment on the?
I did not.
Okay. I was just, I was just, I just want, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you weren't double dipping.
I was there to listen.
Yeah. All right. And that, that's everything I have. Keep up the good work, town staff.
My only comment actually relates to civility as brought up by Trustee Poston. Having been in the audience for the P and Z meeting, it was standing room only. I don't know the number of, of non-elected people who were in the room or non-appointed, I should say, who were in the room. There were people on both sides of the discussion and everybody focused on the topic at hand. Nobody was disrespectful to anyone. There was, I don't think there was a single utterance of disrespect towards any person in the room at any time. I think that's, that's because of two things. I think first and foremost, Chair Williams did a fantastic job before the public comments started of pointing at the big sign on the wall that says, these are the rules and we're going to enforce them, please be respectful. But she also managed the entire public comments process very well. I think she deserves credit for how well that conversation went and the actionable outcomes from it. The other thing is I, I think civility should be an undercurrent in everything we do, whether it's in public or private. Whether that's overly idealistic notwithstanding, I think we should be the same way all the time, everywhere, to all people. I try to be that way if I come, if I see you in the street or if I'm in here to talk to town staff about something, I, I want to be consistently respectful. It shouldn't be the exception, it should be the rule. And I think we all do a very good job of doing that. Now, having been in the P and Z session, I see that they're doing an outstanding job of doing it on what could have been a volatile topic. I also want to thank the citizenry who showed up and spoke respectfully about the topic because it all comes down to them. We all work for them. And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the executive session. And before we go into it, I want to touch base with Attorney Sawyer on whether or not, sir, you feel it's necessary.
So the executive session would be to advise you on matters involving negotiation or legal advice specifically related to the proposed contract with Town Administrator Jim Mann. And in your packet, you will see a memo from me that also has the contract attached to the, uh, contract attached to it. I feel like the contract that has been crafted is within the negotiation parameters that were set by this board. Um, so I would say, unless if somebody has a question, uh, you know, that's kind of of a negotiation, uh, nature, I think what we are presenting to the board is consistent with, uh, the discussions that have previously been had, and, uh, we don't need an executive session.
So that's a question for all of you trustees. Does anybody feel like you have a question that you wanna ask in an executive session, or clarification that you need based on the, the memo?
Not in executive session, but I just had one quick question, because I noticed it, the contract was in our board packet, but was, just because it was an executive session, was that on, y- you know, like the town website's board packet? So the whole public saw it anyway, so it's not like.
No, but, but if, if y- you were of the opinion that I had dramatically misunderstood the negotiation, uh, points that we had previously discussed in bringing this contract forward, we could go into executive session so you could educate me about how I had messed that up.
No, you didn't mess anything up.
Okay.
It looks good.
Then I, I'm fine with not having the executive session. I don't think there's, having read the memo, I don't think there's any need for us to go into executive session this evening.
Nope.
I don't see the.
Okay.
Reason to either.
Excellent. Then the next item on the agenda is Resolution Number Twenty-four, Series Twenty-Twenty-Four, a resolution appointing James Mann as town manager and approving a contract with James Mann. Because we did change the job title, did we not?
No. We're working on that. I, it might take, uh, an act of the citizenry to do that, so.
Need to change the charter.
Yeah.
Continue until apprehended. Come on.
Uh, what, what's in a word? Um, so happy to report that, uh, we have a resolution in the packet, uh, appointing, uh, Jim Mann as the town administrator for the Town of Silt. Uh, this follows on the heels of, um, the town giving notice that Jim was the finalist uh, from the public, uh, hiring process that occurred. Uh, we have in the packet a form of contract that would guide, uh, Jim's employment with the town. So what, what is important to know that whereas for literally all your other employees, other than your town administrator and myself as a, a contract attorney, uh, they, your employees fall under your employee handbook. They, uh, are, uh, kind of protected with various appeal rights and, uh, protections for their employment. Uh, your, your town administrator is kind of subject to the whims of the board. And for that reason, we, uh, you know, we don't have, uh, contracts with any of the other employees, where they simply are, fall under the employee handbook. But your town administrator, it's a, it's a special position, uh, and it can be a volatile position. And to that end, we have a contract, and the contract establishes a few basic things. It sets a salary, uh, it provides review periods. Uh, for, uh, for Jim in particular, given his number of years of past public service and career development, he's being brought in not as a first-year employee, but for purposes of your employee handbook, he's being brought in as an employee with ten-plus years of experience, and he will kind of vest in that amount of vacation time, uh, associated with that length of employment. Uh, and most importantly, I think, from the standpoint of, of the Board of Trustees, is that in the event Jim were to be terminated for something other than cause, and we'll talk very briefly about cause, uh, Jim would be entitled to severance. And again, for the remainder of your employees here, if, if they are terminated for some reason, they don't, they don't get severance, but because the town administrator can be a, a political position, um, and frequently you're recruiting a town administrator from outside the community, and they're making arrangements to move, and, uh, if they were to get another job as a town administrator, they'd have to move somewhere else, uh, we do provide for severance. And so the severance is initially in the amount of three months of the gross, uh, uh, wages, uh, and that that will escalate by one, one month's of severance for each year he is employed, up to a maximum of five years of severance. And that will happen automatically under the contract. Uh, the, uh, the salary for the position, uh, is reviewable by, by the town board. There is not a set procedure for, uh, increasing that, other than Jim will be included in cost of living increases that are generally applicable to town employees as a whole through the budgeting process.
So he gets, sorry, a quick question. He gets COLA, but not anything merit-based?
Merit-based would come to you, and Jim will, through the evaluation process, make requests from time to time as to what he thinks merit-based increases should be, but he will be brought into the, the general COLA, uh, salary increases that are applicable to the town employees as a whole.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, those, those are the pillars of the, the employment agreement. You, I mean, it's not a long document, uh, because again, the, uh, you know, kind of the employee manual, at least in certain respects, with, as it pertains to benefits, governs what Jim gets. Uh, but there are a couple of things that are unique to being the, the administrator of the town, and the, uh, the employment contract governs those, those items. So happy to answer any questions. Uh, Jim has been great to work with through the drafting of the contract, has had some constructive things, uh, you know, for us to think about, but, uh, we were able to, I think, pretty quickly get to a mutual yes, and, uh, recommend approval of Resolution Number Twenty-four.
Can you just clarify, it's a three-year contract?
It is a three-year contract, af- after which you can reappoint, because the town administrator is in appointed position, uh, or you could, after three years, say thank you and enjoy other pastures. Yeah.
Any other board members have any questions, comments?
No.
Concerns?
Within the bounds of what we talked about, so I'm good with it.
Yep. Speaking for myself, I'm, I'm really glad, A, that this process has concluded, and B, and likely more important, that it's concluded, uh, with Jim saying yes. I think he's, he's been great to work with since the water plant and all the financial analysis, and also getting to know people, including all of us. And that's translated well into his time as an interim. I think the, the bar is high because of all that Jeff did while he was here, but I think Jim's gonna clear it with room to spare. And I'm looking forward to seeing how the, his role and all the staff people succeed under him and how our projects are getting done, because that's a big part of what we do, is not just building things for the community, but also evolving the workforce for the community. And that's where Jim, I think that's one area where your credentials stood out to me, as separate from everybody else's, in your ability to make those around you better. And I think that's one key reason why I'm glad to have you on the team full-time.
Very happy to be here.
Nicely said, Mayor Protem.
Okay, this is an action item.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion to approve resolution, approve, approve Resolution Number Twenty-four, Series Twenty-Twenty-Four, a resolution appointing James Mann as town administrator and approving a contract with, uh, James Mann.
I'll second.
I want you to read it out.
All right. We have a motion by trustee Poston to accrue, to approve Resolution Number Twenty-four, Series Twenty-Twenty-Four, as presented, and that was seconded by trustee Clausen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Then the next item and last item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by trustee Brenton to adjourn, seconded by trustee Poston. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Have a great night.